Councilmember Shepard Rami?
Here.
Did you hear her here?
She's here, but I think she's muted. There she is.
No, I said here. I don't know if you can hear me.
Barely.
Thumbs up. Can you hear me?
We can't, we can't. I think the volume's just low. We're gonna work on that and raise that up so we can hear you better.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Talt. Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Here.
Mayor Udi?
Here.
Thank you.
This special meeting agenda was posted 24 hours prior to the meeting at the following locations: City Hall, the Public Library, and the Recreation Department. The special agenda was also posted on the city's website. The city welcomes public input. At this time, the public may address the city council on items that are not on the agenda. Pursuant to state law, the city council may not discuss or take action on any issues not on the agenda. To ensure that everyone is, that's joining us remotely, please speak clearly. Do we have anyone here that would like to comment? Is there anyone in the virtual world that would like to comment?
There are no requests for comment at this time.
Thank you. Then let's move on to new business. Item number one, the management procurement software for the Community Services Department. May we have the presentation, please?
Good morning, Mayor. Before we launch in, I just want to, you've seen his face before, but you've never seen him presenting a staff report. Mr. Robert Zubiate is the management analyst to the Community Services Department, and he's making his debut this morning. Go ahead, Robert.
Thank you. Good morning, Honorable Mayor. Can you hear me? Okay. Good morning, Honorable Mayor and esteemed members of the city council. As Dr. Marla said, I am Robert Zubiate, and I'm the Community Services Analyst here to present on this item today. We are here today to continue the re-envisioning journey for recreation as part of the plan that was presented to you last April. That plan proposed dropping classes, more outdoor activities, and the prospect that there was gonna be more spaces to rent in the future. That plan also included the prospect of new management software to handle the needs of a re-envisioned recreation division. We currently have an outdated version of RecTrack that will no longer be supported, and thus there's an urgent need to make the upgrade. We looked at the option of simply upgrading RecTrack, but we found that that was gonna be insufficient for the needs of recreation in the future and the desires of the community. Over the past year, we went on a hunt for something truly wonderful. We wanted management software that was easy to use, better community customer service, handled refunds, and improved program registrations, which would then free up staff time for other projects. We issued a detailed RFP in November 2020 to seven vendors, and we received responses from Civic Rec and RecTrack. After a series of demonstrations and thorough vetting, we firmly concluded that Civic Rec was the best investment. Not only did Civic Rec address our questions, but it also exceeded our expectations. Other neighboring cities that use Civic Rec, including Beverly Hills and Arcadia, share our positive thoughts on Civic Rec and agreed that it would add positive value to our city. Civic Rec will cost $48,855 for the initial three-year contract. Year one costs include our $17,000, which will be divided into two payments: the first due at execution and the other at implementation, or six months, whichever is sooner. Year one costs also include a GIS import that will differentiate between residents and non-residents, as well as additional staff training time. Today, we are asking for an appropriation for the first payment of the year one cost only. The second payment and year two costs are already incorporated into the proposed fiscal year 2122 Community Services Budget, which you will review in a few moments. We are targeting a December launch for this software, which will give us plenty of time for staff training. Additionally, residents will not lose their ability to register in person. This will simply expand on the ways that they can register and sign up for our offerings. Again, this move to this new software aligns with our re-envisioning plan, and we hope you can share in our excitement. That concludes my presentation, and I am here for any questions.
Thank you. I'd like to open it up for questions from council. Mr. Talt, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you. Just one. How long do you perceive it will take for staff to get up to speed? And what's the learning curve for someone on the residential side getting comfortable with this program?
So as part of the implementation timeline, staff training is approximately two months. The actual hours are eight hours, and that's all gonna be conducted virtually. But that's them training us, and then we can actually practice on our own end. In conversations with other cities, resident learning curve is pretty much nonexistent because it is so easy to use.
Thank you.
Any other questions, sir?
No, that's it.
Okay. Remote councilmember Shepard Rami, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mayor Udi. You know I do, even from afar. But these are quick. I appreciate you bringing this forward after our discussion last year, and I think that the contract and the group that you chose. But I wanted to ask, there were some things included in the Vermont systems. If you look at, I don't know if you have the council agenda packet in front of you, but in the Vermont systems, on page 181 of 308 in our packet, there were some things that seemed very useful that were included in that, and I wanted to know if it's possible to either tell us whether they're included in the Civic Track. For example, the youth camp management, you'll see at the bottom of that page. And I think that's very useful both for staff and for families in our city in the future, you know, signing up with days and times and things. And I didn't see such an item in the contract attachments for Civic Rec. So I'm wondering, is there a possibility to add kind of, or discuss whether some of the features that might be most useful, like that one for our community, be added to the Civic Rec? I don't know how that works and what it is in terms of the contract. And even the check-in processing right above it, I think, would be, given the ease that you need to do things now with pandemic or future issues. Both of these caught my eye when I reviewed the packet, and I don't know if they are included in different language in the Civic Rec packet, or if it might be something we could add and bring to our community. Thank you.
Certainly. So the youth camp management does exist in Civic Rec. I didn't quite catch the second item that you were looking for, councilmember.
It's, uh, thank you. It's the, above that, it's the check-in processing where people can actually have, you know, like many places where you have a barcode or something given to you. So when people check into an event or registration, it can be ticketless, that we could move forward in that direction in the future. Does a Civic Rec package include such features?
Yes.
So the answer was yes, it does. Are there any other questions? Gretchen?
No, that was it. Those are my two main additions that I wanted to find out about. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. It was helpful. And in looking at this, page 110 of 308 through 112 seems to really answer any questions on this item. But I just wanna drill down just a teeny bit. I, people will finally be delighted in not listening to me talk about refunds and all that they take to process. So I'd like to talk a little bit about that. We may still have some residents who are resistant to either use a bank transfer or a credit card. If they pay by cash or credit or check, will they still be able to be part of this refund process?
As part of the direct credit card process, or as in?
Well, the ability to issue refunds.
Yes.
So for example, if I paid by check, how would the system get my money back to me, say, if the class is canceled?
So if it wasn't a check, I assume that the city would issue back a check. Correct? Director Chung?
The process would be, if it's paid through credit card on the system, obviously, the system will refund them. But if it's a check or a cash, it would have to be through us, meaning AP would have to process, unfortunately, yes.
Okay, so I guess you haven't heard the last of me. It just kills me, the cost of getting someone their money back. So we may then need to strongly encourage credit or bank debit. And for some people, they just might not be used to using either one of those. But that, that piece is a slight disappointment, although I think the program is excellent. And then, following up where Councilwoman Shepard Rami was, we certainly will be able to use this in many ways for library signups and library. Will it be sort of a bifurcated program, whereas the library will have their own system within, or is it all one that anyone can access on either side? Can you just talk a few sentences to that?
Yeah. So it'll be one system that everyone can access. It's pretty much all throughout the same programming. The library can set up, quote-unquote, classes or activities that people can sign up for, and that'll at least help track program participation, but it's pretty much just gonna be the same system all throughout.
Okay, great. And like I said, if you can find a way to comfort those of us who don't want those eight hands touching refunds, to find a way that we can market this, to try to get as many people as possible to go over to one of the preferred methods. Thank you so much.
One, one question. What is the cost of our current, the annual cost of our current system?
RecTrack is $4,000 a year.
Okay. So then that savings of $4,000 a year times three years, or $12,000, could go against this $41,000. So the net-net is gonna be about a $28,000, $29,000 investment for the city.
Yes, that's one, that's another way of putting it. Yes.
You're good. Thank you.
I have a question just to follow up on, if you don't mind, Vice Mayor Jacobowski's. If, if you write a check or use cash and you, you're not gonna use it, and i-is there a way to bank it with the system so that there's a credit on the system that you can use rather than requesting it check back?
So it's a great question that I just asked our recreation manager on that very same question. If we put anything on credit, and we don't do that, this new system has the capability, but it gets very difficult to track and also account for every time you do put things on credit. So the process of refunding will be ideal, in my opinion.
Okay.
But I did find out that on the rec side, 90% of their transactions are credit cards. So with this new Civic Rec, Civic Rec system, that will be just flawless, meaning credit card refunds will be done seamlessly without, only the 10% of checks and cash that we receive will be through our AP system.
That's extremely encouraging to hear.
Great.
Councilmember, may I go back, or do you have another?
No, I'm, I'm.
So, so with that, most of the time when we're issuing these refunds, it appears, based on the ledger, that a class has been canceled. Is that accurate? When we may see 12 people getting a refund.
Yes.
Okay. So tying in with this new system, this might be an excellent time to look deeper into success of previous offerings. And maybe if we're re-offering something that just barely met the mark the time before in terms of registration required, to think twice about offering it is such a hassle. Even with this good system, I think this might be a great time to just sort of do an overview of where our successes are and what we may want to eliminate. I know we like to have X number of classes, but sometimes those numbers of refunds, no matter how they're done, become a bit excessive. So just a thought. Thank you.
Dr. Wong, do you have any questions of the software package? Thank you very much. I'd like to open it up for public comments. Do we have any public comments on this topic?
We do not have any requests for public comment on this item.
Then I'd like to bring it back to council for discussion. Dr. Wong, would you have any thoughts on this?
I can support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Remote Shepard Rami, do you have any comments or thoughts on this?
Uh, no, I can support it and thank staff for putting the work and spending the time. I also wanted to highlight that in this new Civic Rec, we have the ability to do volunteer management, which I hope we will take note of. I know that there's a lot of community members who hope to be involved in helping the city, whether it's at the Lacy Park or wherever. Also, the surveys and the email blasts that are part of this package, I'm referring to 106, no, I'm sorry, 110 and 111, which Council Vice Mayor Jacobowski just highlighted. There's some very good things that are coming. And so I'm anxious to support this and get our, our great departments working in this and using it, because I think this will be a benefit and a lot better communication with our community and ways for them to interact in community services. So thank you for bringing this forward and doing a nice job today, Robert.
Thank you. Mr. Talt?
Thank you. No, I think this is a wonderful program. Seems to encompass, and thank you for a, your presentation, your hard work in this matter. And to answer the Vice Mayor's concern, during the revisioning process, we talked about setting it up so that it would be much more judicious in our offerings. So this is just one piece, and there will, don't be concerned, or it's right to be concerned, don't be overly concerned about the contract offerings that we will make, because that's going to be built into the new system to make sure we're judicious.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, do you have any thoughts on this topic?
No, considering we were down to two choices, and one was great and one wasn't, this is the way to go.
And I have, I have nothing else to add. Is there a motion, please?
I'll make a motion. I move to, one, approve the procurement of the software program. So, oh, I can't see with this fog. So named Civic Rec and the amount, and the total amount of $40,855.85. And number two, appropriate $8,500 from the general fund reserves to account number 101-60-4150-0500 under, under Contract Services IT for the first payment to Civic Rec and to execute the three-year contract.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second, thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepard Rami?
Yes.
Councilmember Talt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Mayor Udi?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Move on to item number two, the proposed budget for Community Services Department and the update on the capital expenditures for, Director Chung?
Great. Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'll begin. All right. Today concludes our budget study session number two with Community Services Department's budget, and then an update on the various CIP pending items. With that said, let me begin our, my presentation, and it will be quick. If you can bring the PowerPoint up for me, that'd be great. As we wait on the PowerPoint to come up, I just want to express that CSD had the biggest impact on, due to the COVID pandemic. As you're aware, they had limited facility closures, they had facility closures and limited programming throughout this whole past year and, and some. So I believe that they did a great job just providing the services and support for the community during this challenging time for the department, and I wanted to commend them for their great work. With that said, also, their budget for this fiscal year end, as I covered last week, is that they will have the biggest savings on the expenditure side, as they are not programming and expending at the rate that we budgeted, of course, last year. At the same time, their revenues also are not coming in, offsetting some of those savings on the expenditure side. With that said, during this budget process, the city manager and I and the department spent probably the most time going through each line item with their budgets regards to all the various increases and decreases that you see through the staff report. And with that said, though, their overall budget is decreasing, and I'll touch on that in, in a little bit here. Their overall expenditure budget for next year is $3.3 million. That comprises a personnel budget of $2.3 million and 31.24 FTE, or full-time equivalents, and that's where you see a decrease there, and I'll touch that on that in a little bit. Services and supplies, their budget is $1 million. As I mentioned, their overall budget for next year is decreasing by $235,000. And there's those two components. On the personnel side, we see, we expect a decrease of $44,000. And for that, the reason for that decrease is they're decreasing their FTE by 3.93. And the main driver for that is due to the cancellation of the before and after school program next year. But of course, that savings is offset by the contractually obligated items on the personnel side for the 2% increase in MOU, pension, and also the cafeteria benefits that are increasing next year. On the services and supply side, is where you'll see the bigger savings or decrease in budget is, they're decreasing their budget a little less than $200,000 next year. And that's also driven by, mainly by the before and after school program cancellation next year. And on the library side, their budget is increasing on the services and supply side by a little less than $8,500. But regards to all the increase and decreasing throughout the department, the biggest increase for their budget is the $30,000 interior painting request for next year. Moving on to the revenue side for the, for CSD, their revenue budget for, on the general fund, is $689,000. That is a decrease of about $600,000 from the current fiscal year, and that's really comes down to the cancellation of the before and after school program. That was the main revenue driver for the department, so we see that going away next year. And also facility rentals, as stomen, due to the ADA requirements, are, the department won't be able to rent that facility out. And also here at San Marino Center, as we are going into construction, we expect that revenue to not come in, especially on the second half of the fiscal year. On the donation side, they're budgeting $21,000, and that's slightly decreased from this year as well of $12,500. And due to the pandemic, we did see a decrease in donations, and so we do forecast that into next year as well. Onto the bar graph here, I just wanted to show the council, just the two departments, the left side, the recreation. The blue line is the 1819 actuals, the collect, the department collected a little over 1.2 million. And then you see this big decrease in the orange line, which is the 1819, or 1920 actuals. And that's when the pandemic began and started impacting the department, and so you see a big drop there. And then obviously, the gray bar, and I know it's hard to see, but that's our, what we, what the department is forecasting to end the fiscal year this year, and it's a little shy of $200,000. And see that big trend line decreasing, and that's really driven by COVID. Regards to next year, though, we do see an increase as we slowly climb out of this COVID environment. This budget, this revenue budget is conservative, as we do believe that it should be between this orange line of 1920 and the gold line of a 2021 budget. We should be around that in actuals for next year for, for the recreation department. Moving on to the library side, very similar trend, as you can see, a decrease from 1819 into what we believe we're gonna end the year at 2122, or, I'm sorry, 2021. And that's really driven by the past par revenues, as pandemic has basically took away tourism. But we do see a demand increasing on, on the past par revenues. So hopefully, next year, we do forecast, and it's a conservative forecast, that we see a bump again back up to maybe 1920 level. So we should be around that level next year. With that said, that really concludes my CSD presentation. Just want to highlight to the council that I will be coming back to the council at the end of the month for the adoption of the budget, but that does not make the budget final. I will be, of course, coming to the council quarterly next fiscal year to give status of the budget. And during mid-year, which will be January of next year, or next 2022 year, at that time, the council, if need be, we can always amend the budget as we are slowly getting out of COVID. We don't really know how it looks like on the outside, on the other side of COVID. We are remaining optimistic. With that said, I'll turn it over to the mayor for questions and discussion. Thank you.
One, one quick question for me before we get other councilmembers. Do you have a schedule for the net impact of the budget revenue minus expenses?
I, I have a schedule here for my own notes. I don't have one that, unfortunately, I don't have copies of that, but I do have numbers, if you do need numbers for you, Mayor.
I would be very interested in the net impact of revenue minus expenses before we ask councilmembers for their comments.
Okay.
I join in that, only because a lot of the discussion, as Mayor Udi knows, was directed at lowering that gap to an acceptable level, which was, I saw it someplace in the, in the report. I can't find it now. But it's, I think it's important if we look at that.
Not a.
Mayor and councilmember, if I might, I wanted to offer some high-level comments before we got started, but it kinda got away from us. The issue specifically that the two of you are speaking about related to revenue is challenging this year and going forward. As the council knows, our primary revenue drivers, especially on the recreation side, are the before and after school program and the preschool program. The preschool program, we, of course, received direction from you to work on moving that to a third-party provider. We thought we had achieved an answer. It looked like the school district wanted to pick that up, but given the circumstances over there, they're not picking it up this year. So we will continue to run that, which means we will continue to see the revenues for that. However, on the other side, the before and after school care program, which as Finance Director Chung indicated, is one of our significantly high revenue sources, was eliminated as a result of the Right, the Right at School program that's being offered by the school district now. They are offering their own before and after school care program. And as I've discussed with you previously, to not compete with them, we aren't running that any longer. So the shift in programming that we moved to a year ago, which was more community engagement, community building, community-wide, and hopefully more focusing on our active seniors, those are typically not revenue, revenue-driving programming. So we're in the unfortunate situation, even separate from COVID, where we're moving more towards programming that tends to not bring in revenue, and we're moving away from the programming that tends to bring in all of our revenue. So some of the assumptions, I think, that the Blue Ribbon Committee initially were focusing on are turning out to be a little bit different as things are unfolding, and that's one of those things that we're working on. So while Paul is quickly jotting down the numbers for you right here of net impact, I do just wanna say, you, you would expect to see that the net, the net expenditure will be higher than it was in previous years because we've lost some of those primary revenue sources.
Understand, but we have revenue here and we have expenses. We'd just like to, transparency, see what the net, net is.
Understand. So for overall, for CSD, the expenditure for next year's budget is $3.3 million. The revenues that they're anticipating to bring in is $710,000. So the net will be $2.6 million support from the general fund.
And what was it in 2019 and 2020?
I, unfortunately, I don't have 1920, but I can provide you 2021, the current fiscal year. I could do the math really quickly, but I don't have that in front of me.
Just the, just the order of magnitude is fine, because on your slide, you do have a couple bar charts for revenue for 2019, and on the schedule, we have what the expenses are.
Okay. Give me, if you give me one minute, I could do that.
Mayor, may I ask a question of the city manager at this time?
Sorry. Just, just one second, Gretchen. Let's get this answered, and we'll, we'll ask for general questions.
Oh, okay. Sorry. For 1819, the total expenditure was $1.8 million. And then the revenue was for 1819, what is that, $1.6 million? So the net will be.
Well, you have the 1819, you have the total expenses of $3.2 million.
No, that's not right. Sorry. That didn't make sense.
Hold on.
Hold on, hold on. Here we are. While I was saying that, that did not make sense, because there's no way it could be $1.3 million. 1819, for the department, both departments together, was $3.2 million. Sorry about that. It makes more sense now. And then the revenue was $1.6 million.
So then the net was a, a $1.6 investment?
Yes.
And what was the, the revenue in 2019, 2020?
So for 1920, the total expenditure was basically $3 million expenditure. And then on the revenue side, it was $900,000 in revenues in 1920.
Okay, so then the investment that year was $2.1 million. So we've gone from an investment of $1.6 to $2.1, and this proposal is a $2.6 million?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that framework. And in the future, it's nice to have those, those schedules netted out.
Definitely noted, yes.
Like to open it up for questions from council. Remote Shepard Rami, you have some questions, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to follow up because I misunderstood things and ask city manager, Dr. Marla, have, my understanding about preschool is that it's no longer, or this year it was not offered because of both COVID and conditions, and staff, staff, excuse me, was redirected. Am I mistaken, and what was the decision to bring it? And what was the decision to bring it back? Because I thought like the other programs, it was something that was discontinuing in the future.
Sure, I can answer that question, council member. This particular year. I'm sorry, let me start at a different place. This year, we've been looking for a third party provider for preschool. The council, which I appreciate, gave us no set timeline at which to discontinue preschool offerings, but to simply try to find a way to seamlessly shift it. Unfortunately, in the middle of this year, last year, COVID hit and preschool was discontinued, not out of an intentional decision to stop the programming, but because we couldn't run the programming as a result of COVID restrictions. As we were getting ready to think about whether that program could return, at least for the remainder of the fiscal year, the school district approached us about including preschool as part of their right at school offerings, which would then launch this fall, fall of 2021. So we began moving forward on the assumption that the preschool program would probably run during summer and then shift over to right at school, which hopefully would be a seamless transition for them to receive participants that were already going, perhaps even teachers that were already qualified, and it would be a win-win for the community. Unfortunately, again, as a result of several factors over at the district, I think primarily based on the measure failing a month or so ago, the district decided they needed to redirect their efforts in other directions and did not want to target opening preschool this fall. With the departure of Superintendent Wilson, I'm not sure how that overall plan will change for the future. I think Superintendent Wilson was hoping that perhaps instead of launching this fall, they could launch it next fall. But I don't know what a new superintendent will, will want to do about that program or the school board. So in the absence of that, we do still have demand for that program. We had not, as I said, made an intentional decision to discontinue it without anything to replace it. So now that COVID protocols are changing, we have begun the offerings again. And we will continue to run that preschool for at least one more fiscal year while we continue to look for a viable third party option.
And a follow-up, so preschool is run operating now?
Yes.
All right, and then I don't know if you, Mayor, that was what I wanted to ask the follow-up on. Do you want me to go into regular questions about the packet itself?
Yes, please. You have questions?
All right, I met and spoke with Director Chung. And thank you for putting this together and your presentation as well. I know this is a lot of work. And even on the fly, you were able to answer our questions, which are important for the big picture. So I thank the mayor and I thank you for bringing that up and getting, you know, the larger picture before the community and us as well, and before we dive into the details. But I wanted to ask you, because there was that budget line item in the library budget, that kind of catch-all, which says other contract services in the library budget, you know, across many departments. And I think you gave me a little bit of an update and explanation of the various programs in an email. But I think it's important because it does, you know, add up to almost $100,000 for the community to understand what comes under those line items. So if you can go through those with me or with the council now, that would be helpful to understand what that, those numbers encompass. Because it's broken out, but all total, it's almost $100,000 and that's a significant amount. Thank you.
Great, and I could do that. Right, I have that email in front of me regards to the breakdown, so.
And in the packet, which page are you referring to?
This is not in the packet. This is just a question that was brought up regards to other contract services and other contract services IT for the library.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. So for this current fiscal year 2021.
Paul, I just so my fellow council members know where I'm going with this. It starts on page two dash, I'll get to you. But 291 and kind of follows across right underneath where the operating budget detail is kind of in the center under each section of the library. There are two line items that continue through each of the subdivisions, if you will, in libraries budget. So it's on 241, kind of mid-page, the first two. Then on 243, there's a new amount under other contract services. Then 245, there's a couple of line items there. And I'm not sure if it's further, I think those are the three. So there may be another one, but Paul, I just so you know, Mayor and various council members.
Thank you.
Yes, so the other contract services and other contract services IT spans across, I believe, four divisions out of the five. For this fiscal year 21, 2021, the total for those two line items was 68,250. Next year, in 2122, the proposed budget has 94,504, $504. So basically that's where the $100,000 mentioned from Councilmember Shepherd Romley. The difference increase is $26,000. So the increase of the $26,000, I just wanted to cover regards to what that entails. So on the contract services side, that increase from this current year to next year is $17,155. And so that increased amount is for $5,000 for adult, in the adult division for art in the park. Also includes $3,625 in the adult division for some of the general fund support regards to some of the donations shortfall. And then also $8,530 in the children's division for the additional general fund support for some of the shortfall from donations. On the.
A question, how would a shortfall in this donations impact expenses?
So because the shortfall, we're budgeting the, it used to reside in the donations fund. But now we're requesting it to move into the general fund. And also reflects the decrease in the revenue on the donation side.
Donations would be revenue, right?
Donations will be revenue, yes. But we do, we do put expenditures to offset the revenue that's anticipated in the donations, in the expenditure donations fund as well.
Mayor, there are two separate account numbers for expenditures. One is when it's funded by the general fund and one is when it's funded by donations revenue. So there's a lot of movement from the donation expenditure line.
I don't, I can't connect the dots on, I could see revenue being down in donations, but I can't see revenue down and revenue impacting expenses. The, the net would be down, revenue would be down, expenses would be the same, and the net would be down.
Yes.
But I can't see why the donations being down would net out in an increase in expenses.
It's because on the donation side, on the expenditure donation side, the department is not budgeting anything on the, on the donations expenditure. But on the general funds side, they're increasing the expense on the general fund side to accommodate for the loss.
Then, then I would suggest you put donations as a line item in, in those departments, in the revenue section. So that we can clearly see donations down.
We do, we do have line items in the revenue donations fund. You don't see that here, but you will see it in the detail that I provide to the council during the budget adoption packet.
But you see where I'm coming from?
Yes, I understand, yes. Regards to the contract, I services IT side, the increase to next year is $9,999 for next year. And that comprises of $2,900. This is really a budget move from processing the division to the administration division for the online computer library center software. And then lastly, a $6,199. This is really a budget correction. The department is really updating the budget line item to reflect what they're spending current fiscal year. And that includes network server security, annual subscription for iPad management software, the public internet access management. Those are the items that are included into the library's line item to, to fix basically their budget for next year.
Thank you, one follow-up. Just because I, I don't know, I understand you explained the increase from 68 to 94, whatever. You know, for this coming year, but what in general, those are still at $68,000. What is really driving this, the other contract services? What are the costs that are booked under this that we have outside contract services? Is this, I understand IT because I'm sure, I, I'm certain that the library has many software type of programs that they're running. So does this also cover subscription services and things like that? But I thought that had another line item. And so I'm just trying to understand what is encompassed in this. Do you have any further information for us about that?
And Director Chung, this is something we talked about. When you have other services or miscellaneous, and if it gets to be north of picking number $20,000, it's probably good to schedule that out so that there's transparency and visibility.
Yeah, I'm just looking through a little bit of detail here just regards to if it's a script subscription or not. So in the other contract services, they don't include subscription costs. These mostly include, and I'm just trying to look and see the detail. Main driver is the integrated library system. Let's see what else, some catalog, catalog pictures. And, and collection headquarters, I don't know what, what item that is, but that's basically what's mainly driving the other contract services. But as I mentioned, next year, the increase, the real increase that for next year is that $5,000 in art in the park. But then the rest of is that donations money that we're budgeting into the general fund for the general fund support for the lack of revenues coming in on the donation side.
I apologize, yeah, thank you. I, I am, I find it hard to track the donations issue as well, not knowing. I understand conceptually that donations are down. People have, you know, not been giving as much to the library and things like that for various, and we have a very supportive community. And so I appreciate that it reflects, but it's hard to see it reflected in this way and track it so that I can understand it for future years. You know, this is kind of an anomaly and I do think it would be nice to be able to have it broken out in some way. So we, if we do have a long-term issue with donations dropping off, then in my mind, then also spending has to drop off. Or we have to be more interested in donations and focusing on that as getting back to normal or pre-pandemic normal. Because I don't know if this is a one-off situation this year where we were down in certain categories. And then the city essentially is giving more from general fund than we have in the past, or whether this will be a trend we're seeing. So I do think it is useful to perhaps highlight the donations and get some more detail on some of these, even if it's a footnote. You know, I don't necessarily need to change the budget, but a footnote in the agenda packet or something that deals with this in future ones. So we could see if there's a trend here. And then we can also help the library and their supportive groups really focus on this for the long term. Because I, I don't know whether this is a trend or just a circumstance of this last year. So I would appreciate it in the future if you can do that. Thank you.
I'll definitely do that. I left a note here to make sure to provide additional clarity on the donations. One thing I do wanted to add was I wish Mark was here, our, our accounting manager. He would know exactly the, the staff report that goes annually to the council regards to donations. But I do provide the city council an update to the donations balances as well. I believe it's July, but I could be wrong on that specific month. But I do provide the council an update on how the fund balances are doing overall on all the donations. So what I can do is during that staff report, I could also break out between the library donations and add additional clarity so that it's clear regards to how much donations we're collecting, how much donations we're expending, and how much support on the general fund side is providing that support for next year.
Thank you.
All right, I had one other question, Mayor, and that's on page 283 of our packet, the city packet, or dash 233, if you will, Paul. And this has to do with another item I asked about. This is the increase of almost $45,000 under the library's budget in the administration section. And I believe this is primarily cost of the interior painting. And I wanted to get more information on that as to, I don't, to me, it was the first time I was made aware that there was an issue and that required the interior painting project. And we discussed whether that's, I know it's maintenance, but it's kind of a capital expense. And so I wanted some further clarifications because for me, it would be more appropriately dealt with, even though it's maintenance. But it still is a one-time expense that would then, so conceptually, it should have been something we considered with our whole. But I wanted some information as to what was driven that and whether it's been, what is the right word? An RFP has gone out or what the status is of that request? Because now it's included in the budget, but I did want my fellow council members to be aware that we hadn't approved this, et cetera.
I could answer the number side and then I can refer to the director regards to the status of the, obviously, we, we haven't budgeted or adopted the budget. So we are not in the process of doing RFP. But regards to the request for 30,000, the city manager, myself and Director Thron, we had discussions regards, should this be a capital expense? Should this be an operating expense? But really, at the end of the day, it's an operating expense, even though it's a one-time expense. This is really for maintenance of the structure or the building itself. And it's an interior painting item. So anytime we do do painting, it will never be in a CIP, it will be a operating expense. And regards to follow-up question, anything else? Michael, you want to add to that?
Thank you, Director Chung. We attempted to paint the building with internal forces during the pandemic and found that we were unable to match the paint colors or up to the height.
I'm afraid we can't hear Director Thron. Online, it's not coming through. Thank you.
Get another microphone.
The depart, the Public Works Department during the pandemic attempted to paint the interior of the building using our own forces and some part timers. However, the project was much larger than our abilities to do it. We were having issues with matching paint colors as well as reaching the, the upper portions of the, the two-story atrium parts. So it's best to be done with professionals who have the tools, the skills and the materials to do it. And contracting it out is the most efficient way to do that.
When was the last time it was painted or has it ever been painted since the construction finished, the rebuild?
To my knowledge, we've never done an interior repainting of the building, so this would be the first time.
Thank you. Those are my questions, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Dr. Wong, do you have any questions on the community services?
No, no, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Talke, do you have any questions?
Yes, where can I track the preschool expenses in the budget areas starting at 217? In what division is that, is that under youth? Is.
Robert, is it on youth right now? It's under youth.
So it would be page.
271.
Line item. Two dash 13.
So in years future, we can look at a reduction of personnel, at least personnel in that, in this area of the recreation budget?
If we're successful in moving preschool to a third party, we would expect so.
I mean, assuming.
Yes, assuming there's no more preschool, we would expect to see some reductions there, yes.
Okay. Secondly, I thought that, and I, I went back and tried to take a look at it last night, but I couldn't find it. I thought this year's budget was just the same thing as the previous year's budget. That we decided not to change anything. That's, that was last year's budget. So 2020, 21 should track with 2019, 20.
No, there were multiple years where we did hold the recreation side of the community services budget to a status quo while we were doing the re-envisioning.
And that was.
That was, so that would have been 1819 and 1920. Then last year, we came to you with a proposal for the re-envisioning plan that then Acting Community Services Director Joseph Espinoza presented. And we did completely overhaul the budget to reflect it, including different categories and so forth. We're doing some further refining now. Obviously, we had another director and we had the little thing called COVID. That created some impacts. And so we've tried to craft a budget now going forward. And of course, we'll be bringing in a new director who will probably have some additional adjustments as we go.
Yeah, the, so the. Yeah, the, so the substantial increases were in community events as far as the personnel expenses were concerned. And there was one other, adult, I believe?
I think it was probably under adult, but it was primarily for senior programming.
That was primary what?
For senior adult.
Oh, yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, do you have any questions or staff?
Just a few. Thank you, Mayor. I had some of the same concerns that council member Tauck had. I was digging furiously for the preschool. And it wasn't until Dr. Milo explained out, and I probably should have known, so I apologize. We were all set to hand over preschool. And not only do we have to keep it through the summer, but it looks like we will then have it until the end of June in 2022. Is that accurate?
I, I think it's still, I can't speak for the school district. Let's just start there. I think it still makes a lot of sense for the school district to take it over through their Right at School program. Right at School is contracted with them already. It doesn't require going out and getting a new contractor. It's just the launch of a new program. I'd say just it is sizable, but they already have the contract in place to do that. It would be a revenue generator for the district, which I think they certainly could benefit from. So I think there are lots of reasons to think that it, it makes sense to hope that they'll take it over in the fall of 2022. Obviously, at this point, there's, there's no appropriate venue to have that conversation yet, but that would certainly be my first preference of what would happen. If that does happen, we would essentially run our preschool, including the summer session of 2022. Right at School had previously told us that their hope was that we would run as robust a preschool as we could within our limitations to be able to hand them over as many potential participants as possible, and hopefully staff as well.
Thank you. Where I'd like to focus is with Director Chung. So if we keep this through next July, and surprise, we've got it going now when we weren't planning on it. Can you talk about our net at the end of July based on our ongoing expenses? Where we should expect to be financially for these, what, 16 months or so, 15 months? Just to ballpark.
I believe this include, this would include the impact to the changes that are happening next year for, on the rec side.
We were working on the budget with the assumption that we would be discontinuing preschool in the fall. We got word late enough to be really difficult, but early enough to actually make some frantic changes. So the budget that you're seeing here today includes the assumption that we would be running preschool for the fiscal year on both the expenditure side and the revenue side.
But on the youth division budget summary table, that is not just preschool, correct?
Correct.
So could we get that broken down with this unexpected continuing gift that we have? I just would like for council's benefit to see how that pencils out to the end of next July, starting now. And we know that we're only working on projections, but we know how many children we have now. And we will try to ballpark where we will look going forward.
Vice Mayor, are you looking, are you talking about page 263?
263 at the top, yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
No, I was thinking, you know, I think what she's asking is if the director can create a schedule. So maybe between now and the final budget meeting, he can create that schedule. It gives us more visibility on the impact of preschool.
Thank you.
And then send it to us.
So you'd like to see preschool, the impact of daycare, before and after-school program not being there any longer?
Only preschool.
Just the preschool piece of this.
Because the school has the before and after-school covered. Because this is relatively late notice and the fact that we're going to be carrying it for quite a while, I just want to know the impact and, and then to make, you know, sound decisions from there.
I could definitely do that.
And then my next question, on page 277 of 308, facility rental. If I remember correctly, that is mostly what we pay to the school district for the pool, correct? The $14,894?
That's for the pool, yes.
Okay. And how do we expect to come out on that with revenue that will be generated? Will that be giving us an okay net?
It'll probably come short of that, yes.
And have we assessed impartially, and this may be a rec department question, but have we assessed or done a cost-benefit analysis of keeping the pool and whatever it will generate for the next fiscal year?
We have done a projection of that. If you recall the discussion that we had a year ago, which feels like a million lifetimes ago, the, the direction from the council was to move to outsource the aquatics program to a third party. At the time, the financials that you were presented with showed that although we would still take a loss in the program as we do now, it would be less of a loss than we currently take. The other benefit that was raised about maintaining an aquatics program was that many of our, a little bit older youth, take some of their first jobs as lifeguards and so forth. So a year ago, the direction was to continue the aquatics program, but outsource it to a vendor so that we would have less loss. If the council wants to reconsider that, certainly we could. Aquatics is not a revenue generator, and it has not ever been.
And again, going forward, I'd like to just sort of see what we feel the projected loss will be on that. And, you know, we may vary. I would see the pool. And that does it. Thank you so much.
Mayor, can I follow up with a question? Have we considered increasing the fees on the program?
The pro, you're talking about the pool fees?
There were some across-the-board changes that were approved last year already. We're, of course, in a challenging situation since we don't know if aquatics is going to run this summer. We're projecting for next summer. If the council is interested in increasing even further, we certainly could. But we have, we have made increases to the rates.
Thank you.
But our fee will remain constant regardless of you.
Oh, you mean the fee that we pay the district?
The $15,000 for the pool rental will be there regardless, right?
Yes, I believe so. Thank.
And my question is really a little more of a recommendation. This is really, in my mind, not a budget presentation. It's an expense presentation. And in these, in community services, we do have revenue. So I think in future presentations, it would be nice to have revenue and so that we can see the revenue for the different programs, nursery school and preschool. And then visually, we can connect the expenses associated with each one. I think that would be helpful. Would like to open this up for public comment.
Mayor, may I have one follow-up?
Yes, please.
Just so I understand when I'm looking at the recreation, where, Paul, are the expenses for the pool, both in terms of personnel? So I could see how it's changing if we, you know, as we move toward the outside contractor? And where would, and then a question for city manager. When will the decision be made about this summer's pool program? Because I know that there are many people in our community who are interested in whatever form it takes to have that for their families this summer. Thank you.
The expense will be in the contract classes.
So that would be on page 277 of 308?
All right. And then on that note, so the difference being that the personnel, well, the personnel has increased from even this last, the 70, I'm on page 277 for my council members in the public, 277 of the packet. The top line has, I believe we made the adjustment between 2018, '19, and 2019, '20, where we took out because what would be an outside vendor would change our, if you will, our employees in this division, right? And so it further went down when we adopted the budget for last year, or this current year, last year, to $70,000. But now I see we're back up higher to $106,000 in this particular line item. So I'm hoping you can explain what has happened in that regard.
The reason for the increase is really because even though aquatics is going to be done by a third party, there are other contract services, contract classes that the recreation department has proposed for next year. That includes, of course, staff time, and that's why you see that increase in personnel.
And if I may ask, answer the rest of your questions, council member. As you have indicated, there are no personnel costs for aquatics any longer. We've already moved to that. So anything that you see there is not related to aquatics for the contract personnel. The question about, I think you said summer school, but I'm assuming you meant summer camp. This is a, this is a shift in what has typically happened, as the council may be aware and as was detailed in the memo. Tom Sawyer, who typically provides our summer camp, has elected not to run it here this, this summer. So we know that the community, as Councilmember Shepherd-Romme indicated, is very eager to participate in whatever our summer programming is, and we don't want to drop that precious program. So we have actually made the decision to bring it in-house into our community services department and offer it ourselves. So there is a decrease in terms of contract expenses directly related to Tom Sawyer. And then there's an increase in other places in the budget related to our own youth programming for this summer camp. So Councilmember Shepherd-Romme, I'm delighted to commit that we are running a summer camp. We will, we will either begin advertising soon if we haven't already, and we'll be delighted to welcome our residents in.
Okay, just a pop, and there, and also, we've contracted with the pool vendor, and that's going forward? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to open it up for public comment or questions. Are there anyone from the public that has a question?
There are no requests for comment on this.
Thank you. I'd like to bring it back to council for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, if I could, it is, yes, we have contracted it, but the intention is to start it next year. Just didn't want to leave a false impression that we were starting that this year.
Starting what?
The aquatics program.
So we are?
We, we don't know the status of whether we can even have the pool this year. So the expenses that you're seeing here are primarily for next summer since it spans two fiscal years. So we've moved to contract it out, and the programming itself will begin for next summer. It's intended for next.
Ending June, the end of June, then?
Well, the programming wouldn't end, but the budget does.
The budget, yes. It would basically cover the first month because the kids are in school, so one month only.
The contract expenditure would, but we might need to pay the rental of the pool upfront.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, that did not clarify it for me. So just to be clear, there will or will not be pool classes, swimming classes run through our rec at the high school or not this summer?
Acting Recreation Manager Eddie Coverubius is here, and he's been sending me smoke signals to do it. So he's just at the microphone right now and will, will answer himself. Thank you so much, Mr. Coverubius.
Testing. Councilmember, to answer your question, we weren't given clear indication from the San Marino Unified School District if we were going to be able to use the pool for the summer. They weren't sure of the status of that. So when we were budgeting, since we didn't get any kind of indication from them whether we were going to be able to use the, or rent the facility of the swimming pool, we didn't include it for July of this year. So aquatics will begin June of 2022. That's the year that we're programmed, and then the budget, that's the item that you see there.
So let me ask you, okay, when you say we weren't given any clear indication, that means you were given some indication, you just weren't clear about it. What indication have you received?
We, we contacted, contacted the school district various times. And when we had to solidify the contract with the contractor, which they had a deadline by April, the school district still wasn't sure if they were going to be able to rent out the pool. So by that time, we had to already fulfill our obligation to the contractor for the aquatics program. We couldn't fulfill that because we didn't have an answer from the school district.
Okay, so as it presently stands, there is no contracted aquatic program for this summer, but are we going to run one anyway?
We don't have a aquatics program for this year. The contractor doesn't have any time.
No, I, I understand that, Eddie.
The answer is no. We are not, we're not going to because we still haven't gotten a commitment from the school district that we could use the pool.
Okay, well, no one bothered to tell me this, and I happen to be the liaison. I can contact whomever and see whether or not we could run the program. I think it would be a mistake if the school is comfortable with us having it, not having an aquatics program this summer. But that's been kind of confusing. And this, we talk about transparency, and this is the first time I've heard of that.
We will be delighted for your help. We can have some conversations.
And then if we don't have one, I'm confused over the need to spend the money for one month at the very end of the fiscal year.
If we don't have that money put in the budget for 2022, then we wouldn't be able to launch the program next summer either.
I, I'm not clear. So this, this facility rental proposed 21, '22 takes us through the end of June, correct? Next year?
Next year, yes.
And we're not going to be running it this year, right?
At this point.
What, we go with what is today. So that means we would be doing all of this and contracting for maybe 30 days of use, correct?
It's slightly more complicated than that because some of the expenses need to be paid upfront in this fiscal year for the whole summer.
I, I respect that, but as Councilmember Tauck was saying, you know, we, we're really in an unsure, at best, tenuous position. So it just is a little confusing to me if this is only for one month. But I'll leave it till we can get more information and more research. Thank you.
Well, I mean, if we don't have the program, if we cannot use a pool, do we still have to pay for it?
No.
Okay, so we're just budgeting this aside, just in case.
So summer programming is always complicated because it splits two fiscal years. The pool program at the moment, although I hear and appreciate Councilmember Tauck's comments, we will try to see if there's something that we can do for this summer. At this point, as the budget stands, based on the information that we had repeatedly from the school district, it didn't seem like we were going to be able to run the program primarily as a result of COVID and the school's issues. So what you see in the budget here are the costs for the 2022 aquatics program. Some of those costs will only cover 30 days. Some of those costs will need to be paid upfront for the entire summer, even though the summer will move into the next fiscal year.
Thank you. Would like to bring this item back to council for a discussion.
I've said what I need to say. I wish that, and I realize there's been issues given the, the community services director, although we did some fantastic jobs on some of these other programs, but I'm not happy learning about it here today at a budget meeting that we did not plan a aquatics program this summer. I understand COVID obviously has a big deal with it, but guys, we're in the yellow now, and there's a lot more that we could do, and we could limit the program. I'm sorry, that may not be fair at all concern, but we could limit the program and, and move forward, at least trying to provide an opportunity. So, and as you pointed out, the, the budget not having an expense side is really, or not having a revenue side is difficult to assess. But I do appreciate the effort at a very difficult time in putting this together. Thanks.
Thank you. Dr. Wong, do you have any comments?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Remote Shepherd-Romme, do you have any comments or thoughts?
I agree with my fellow council members that it's hard. I understand it was a difficult year for planning, but this is also not a very open, and I don't think we've kept the community informed. And I personally didn't know the council as well, it sounds like, about the pool and the preschool issues and bringing those forward and decisions that were being made that, in the end, do amount to a lot of money. So that's my concern. And then some of the things, for example, like the library painting. I don't mind that it is not, that it's included in the budget necessarily if it's needed, but there's a lot of things that I wish were more highlighted for us and for the community members who read through this and might not be able to spend the time that we have going over the details to pull out some of this. And it still was a mystery to me as to where we stood with preschool and pool. And I don't support either of those decisions personally, but I may not be in the majority of council as to how things are handled.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Do you have any thoughts on these topics?
Nothing additional. Thank you.
I have no other thoughts or comments. Director Chung, do you have the feedback you need on the community services department?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. And maybe can you walk us through the capital improvement project?
Yes. Could you bring up PowerPoint really quick? It's not clicked. Oh, there you go. I just have one slide. I just have one slide for the, for the council today, and then I'll turn it over to Director Thron. My clicker is not working. If we could just go to the next slide where has, I know there's a lot of numbers plastered here on the wall, but just wanted to emphasize three areas here. The, if you go to the top, the second line, it says transfers in from the general fund. That basically is the excess cash that the council approves and moves the excess cash into the CIP fund. So in 2122, we need a, a $3 million transfer in, and then the subsequent four years, as you can see, it's 2.5, and then 3 millions to the out years.
I'm sorry, where is that in our materials so that I can follow along?
It should be in the PowerPoint. Oh, in the last page of the PowerPoint?
Oh, here.
Great, yes.
But, okay, got it.
Yes.
Thank you.
I will have this scheduled to included in the part of the budget adoption. You'll see that as well. On the, on the second line below that, you see project expenditures. Those are just expenditures that are projected out for various CIP projects in the coming years. Obviously, next year, we're, we're projected to spend $10.4 million on CIP. And then, of course, on the near horizon, there are various big projects, such as the water and wastewater projects, that are also included in this forecast. And then lastly, on the last line at the bottom, there's the fund balance ended the year. So this just tracks what our CIP fund balance looks like. And so by 2122, if every, all the projects are completed, then we should have a fund balance of $11.7 million. And then, of course, as we spend for the various other projects in the out years, the fund, fund balance will slowly diminish. That concludes my section here on the CIP. I'll turn it over to Director Thron for all the CIP pending items from our last CIP meeting.
Thank you, Director Chung. To briefly summarize, at your March 17th and 26th council meetings, you reviewed the draft capital equipment and improvement plan. After reviewing the recommended proposals, the council requested changes to three equipment proposals and three capital improvement proposals. The department has made the changes you requested to the proposals and to the spreadsheet tabulations, and they are included in your packet on pages 299 to 308. A full description of the changes are included in the agenda staff report on pages 253 and 254. This concludes staff presentation.
I'd like to ask council if there are any questions. Dr. Wong, do you have any questions of staff?
No, not right now, thank you.
Mr. Talt, do you have any questions of staff?
Yes, I'm going to refer to the spreadsheet. We have a, under FY, reference code FY 0510, street tree management plan, you have $50,000 there. And then under 50 dash 4Xs under the parks and grounds, you have $50,000 there. But when I take a look at the park landscaping condition assessment, it deals with the Lacy Park and Medium Park trees. That, doesn't that cover all the city-owned trees? So why are we having two different assessments made?
One is for actual replacement trees that we purchase and install, and the other one is the condition assessment of all of the parkland that the city owns, which is the median.
So the street tree management plan is the money we sock away?
To plant, to plant and replant trees.
Did we use it all last year?
Oh, yes.
Okay, thank you. You've answered my question.
Council member Shepherd-Rome, do you have any questions of staff?
Sorry, can you come back to me? I have lost the page somehow in transferring some documents, so I, I don't, I just wanted to follow up on that. One question right off the top of my head, I know that we talked about, well, just if I can find it, I will speak at the end. Thanks, sorry.
Vice Mayor, do you have any questions of staff?
Just a few quick ones. I just want to confirm that the, I believe it's a total of three vehicles that are being replaced are all with Air District money.
That is correct.
Oh, that's awesome. Thank you.
Do you have any other questions?
Oh, no, thank you, Mayor.
Council member Shepherd-Rome, did you have any final questions of staff?
Thank you, no, Mayor. I cannot find it at this time.
Okay, thank you. And I have no further questions. Like to open it up for public comment. Do we have anyone from the public that would wish to comment?
There are no requests to comment.
Thank you. Bring it back to council for a discussion. Do we have any comments or questions from, from council? Dr. Wong?
No, just want to thank you for the presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Co?
No, other than to note that I, I know we're just putting this money into the budget, but how far we get on the neighborhood traffic calming program, because I've had the pleasure of having the study, which is difficult to assess, and some of the recommendations in there just will not work. However, I, I realize we're just putting money away. We may not indeed spend it. It depends upon what we and the Public Commission or the, the Public Safety Commission come up with, and also the Measure R money. We still don't know what the status is given about Measure R 710 North projects. So that money is just waiting to be used if, in fact, those dots are made during the year.
Thank you. Any final thoughts or comments? Council member Shepherd-Rome?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. I had one of the items, I appreciate including all these items and the changes that were made in the capital improvement, the capital equipment items, such as the car being reduced in cost and, and also utilizing the smart car, as well as the detective car replacement. I appreciate that you updated that to include the appropriate equipment. I'm on page 254. And then to council member Talt's, right, these are more placeholder programs for the traffic calming and the Measure R, because there's a lot of questions about those. The landscape condition assessment, we were moving up because of, and it includes an overview of the park and the natural environment there and that type of thing. But if you look farther down, the final paragraph on that section above or the recommendation speaks to the historic, my request for historic preservation assessment, and it wasn't so much that I want to, or was requesting the council to support a separate assessment. My concern was if we're doing a facilities assessment and we're paying for somebody to come in, we need to have a specialized person who is aware that those are historic resources of our city. I believe one, if not more, is actually already designated. It doesn't require an assessment as to, or they don't require assessments, but there are certain people, as opposed to a general facilities, if you will, expert who comes in and assesses structure and things like that, there are people who actually do historical restoration and assessment work, who will look and see what is the best way to preserve a building or a historic resource for a city. And so that was my focus. I was asking that the department, when they go out for contracting for this, as we're supporting it as a council, that we pick somebody who specializes in historic resources. And if it, if it is a cost differential, that we absorb that, because these are three, the Old Mill, Turner House, as well as Stoneman, have individual characteristics or wholly historical assessments, historical resources. So we have to pick a specialized consultant. So I just wanted to clarify that for council and hope that they still have, I still get their support when this goes out. And I don't know if Director Thron wants to speak to this.
He's been taking notes, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Vice Mayor, do you have any final thoughts or comments?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. I find the two-page capital equipment budget and five-year equipment expenditure plan document to be beyond beneficial. We know what we're looking at this year, but as I glide over to, I believe it's the second page, line 71, I think we need to keep that sobering number of $7 million in front of us as we plan with our capital improvement programs over the coming years. And I, it's a lot of money, and it's in addition to all the other ongoing wonderful improvements that we're doing in our city. So I just really thank you. This has been a really helpful document. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff, do you have any other, have you gotten the feedback that you need on the capital improvement program? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
It's just in the interest of continuing transparency and making sure to keep you informed, first I want to apologize for not making the council aware about the change to the aquatics program. That is inappropriate. We should have brought at least the liaisons into the conversation, and there is no point which I offered that update. So I apologize for that on behalf of all of us and to the community. On, in terms of the programming side, we've done some quick checking. It is too soon, it's too late to start the program in June, but it does look like our contractor would still be willing to come in and start the program in July. That does, of course, necessitate having a pool. So I have reached out to Superintendent Wilson and asked him if the district would be willing to reconsider their decision and let us, in fact, rent the pool this summer. As soon as I have information on that, I will let you know, but I apologize for, for not making you aware about that sooner.
So, so we previously have an affirmative no from them?
We had a, they were not willing to commit to it at that time.
Oh, okay.
Moving on to written communications, do we have any written communications or public writings for distribution?
We do not have any written communications for distribution.
Thank you. Go to public comments. Do we have anyone from the public that would wish to comment?
We do not have any requests for comment.
Future agenda items. Do any council members want to consider different future agenda items?
Mayor, may I?
Yes, please, Vice Mayor.
Excuse me one moment. Okay, so what I'd really like for us to consider at our final May meeting is, since this is Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, I would really like for us to raise consciousness on this issue and at bare minimum, offer a proclamation, as I am reminded, as I attend the San Gabriel Valley Council of Cities, we have at least 60 to 75% of the San, San Gabriel Valley are of this heritage, and I would like to ask that the city manager see what we might be able to do moving forward to see where the city's role is, is in this.
Thank you for the suggestion. Just a quick straw vote from council members. How many people would like to see this item come?
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Does anyone else have any future agenda items for consideration? Seeing none, we'll adjourn the meeting after an hour and 22 minutes.
Feels like we should buy you coffee or something for that.